Father, we do thank you, Father, for this day. We thank you for the blessings of life and forgiveness. Father, we thank you for being so very good to the Lord. And thank you for our town and our town council, Lord. And I pray that your blessings be upon us. And Father, help us to make decisions that's pleasing and telling what's best for our town. And, uh, Lord, I pray that you just help us to always honor and always say that in Christ's name I pray.
Amen. I pray that you will just sit in the light of the United States of America and do your duty for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to call the meeting to order?
Motion.
Second. All in favor? Alright, need a motion and second to cover only what's on the agenda.
Motion.
Thank you.
Check.
All in. Okay. Alright, item three, reading of the minutes, February 10th, 2020.
The Hackenberg Town Council made a regular session on February 10th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. Mayor Culver asked for a motion to call the meeting to order. Councilmember Lawley made a motion and was seconded by Councilmember Kevin Barlow. Doug Swan, who was in attendance, led everyone in prayer, even though the pledge was said by all. Their attendance is listed below. Mayor Culver stated that the meeting was open for the transaction of business. A motion was made by Councilmember Lawley and seconded by Councilmember Wigginton to cover only the items on the agenda. Voting was as follows, all ayes, no nays. The mayor asked the clerk to read the minutes from the January 27, 2019 meeting, or 2020, I'm sorry. After reading, a motion was made by Councilmember Don Warren and was seconded by Councilmember Wigginton to accept as presented. Voting was as follows, all ayes, no nays. The clerk presented the mayor and council with a financial statement to review. A motion was made by Councilmember Wigginton and was seconded by Councilmember Don Warren to accept as presented. Voting was as follows, all ayes, no nays. In other business, Steve Hood presented the mayor and council with an updated fire roster and their qualifications. There are six certified volunteer firemen and 11 non-certified. The cost of this will be approximately $4,000 a year. Also, Chief Hood will need to keep the roster updated. Also, in other business, Jessica Pruitt was in attendance for an answer on having the consignment sale in the rec center. The council discussed that the floors had just been waxed and didn't want to waste the $1,000 spent on that. Also, the doors haven't been replaced as promised. Mayor Culver asked for a motion for Ms. Pruitt to use the gym, the rec center. No motion was made, therefore it died. Doug Swan, David Ray, and Jonathan Oliver, Oliver were in attendance to address the mayor and council and to ask for the $500 for the youth softball and $500 for youth baseball. Also, the use of the fields for March to June. A motion was made by Councilmember Lawley and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Barlow. Voting was as follows, all ayes, no nays. The mayor is planning to attend a trip in Washington with NACOG in March. A motion was made by Councilmember Don Warren and was seconded by Kevin Barlow to approve this trip. Voting was as follows, all ayes, no nays. Otis Barker Mitchell was in attendance to ask the council to deed them the alley between their property and their sons. The mayor explained that the town could not sell it or deed it to them in case it was needed for a utility, but they could use it like they own it. The mayor and council discussed ordering computers for parlay and mandy. IT technician Wayne Mays had researched and found some, some at good, at a good price, taffy suggested by laptops and docking stations. A motion was made by Councilmember Lawley and seconded by Councilmember Don Warren to make the purchase. Voting was as follows, all ayes, no nays. Crystal Wilson with Contour called and talked with the clerk about offering the help of their employees to the town for cleanup or general cleaning. She asked for a list of ideas to make their, take to their superiors. The mayor and council appreciated the offering, offering will get Crystal with her about these ideas. The mayor and council discussed the possibility of whether to elect council members as they always are or by a large vote. A motion was made by Councilmember Lawley and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Barlow to keep as is. Voting was as follows, all ayes, no nays. Councilmember Wigginton wanted to remind his fellow council members that they shouldn't discuss the good name and character of an employee in an open meeting. It should always be an executive session. A motion was made by Councilmember Lawley and seconded by Councilmember Don Warren to go into executive session. After a brief discussion, the mayor and council returned to the meeting room. A motion was made by Councilmember Lawley and seconded by Councilmember Don Warren to go back into, to come out of executive session.
Is that city and two, so it needs to be changed?
Go back out.
Yeah.
The graveling rate list was discussed. Rod Hudson needs two loads of gravel and Ronnie England needs some for his dad's drive. Now, Councilmember Don Warren made a motion and was seconded by Kevin Barlow to gravel and rate said drives. Voting was as follows, all ayes, no nays. There being no further business to come before the council, a motion was made by Councilmember Lawley and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Barlow to adjourn.
Yeah, I've heard the reading of the minutes. Any questions for the comments?
Do we need to change the part where we buy laptops because we, decision was made to buy the desktops? Do we need that?
I think we're just checking on it anyway.
Okay, okay. Because we're buying laptop or desktops?
Yeah.
Okay.
What would it cost?
He just said it tonight.
Yeah, okay. That's good.
What would it cost us to buy one laptop to go with that?
Well, just have to look into it because we can get some of those on state bid.
If we hadn't, when it could be all in here.
Right.
And we need it and use it different places, couldn't we?
Yeah.
I could use it in the core as well.
We need it at state bid and talk with the guy that we talked.
Since we left that open, we discussed either, either top of computer and we agreed to that, so it shouldn't be any issue going by. Yeah, okay.
Just checking that.
Um, usually they've asked about using the gym some during the rainy time.
Uh, I don't care as long as they have tennis shoes and they use the Nerf top ball.
They don't need big foam rubber balls.
No, absolutely no.
And that's what I was about to say.
That was a batting cage, I told them absolutely not. We, we are not putting that back up. But it's up to y'all.
As long, as long as they're using the Wolfball's and the Softies, then they won't damage the floor. If they start, if they start coming in there with hard baseballs or softballs, you can't do that.
And that's what I told them.
You just have to put those expectations back.
But it's up to y'all.
I feel this way, you didn't tell me you did about that.
Just make sure you write, you know, have some kind of contract written up. It don't have to be a formalized contract, but something that they.
Set a rules.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a way they could use the batting cage over.
Well, I told them they wouldn't be able to bat, but what I figure they're gonna do is roll them the ball and work on fielding and.
But they got, they still have.
Yeah, but the high school uses that.
All the time.
With all the JVs and both varsities and.
I mean, there is.
You gotta have a teacher.
That's right.
In there at all times too. I mean, they, they just ask, I don't know that they'll be up to say it if we tell them no or.
I don't have a problem as long as you got that in there. Now, when we, when we done years ago, we played Wolfball with rubber bats and that we still worked on, they could actually work on the fielding, but, but she can't be.
Get out of control.
That's right. They brought a batting cage and everything in there. Yeah.
What do y'all think?
What do y'all think?
As long as I go with roots, that's fine.
Yeah.
Anybody have anything else?
Crystal Wilson with Contour called today and I answered the phone and, and she's wanting to put basketball.
It's on here. It's on there.
Okay, over at the park anyway. And even though it's on there, I'll finish up. I'm not stopping them at 100%. Uh, and I told you that anybody that, that voted against it would just sit, expelled it.
We'll take anything for you.
That's just what I told them. But, but she's on us to give a list or stuff.
Yeah, they will do too.
Yeah, they will.
I'll pay.
That sounds good.
You can talk again when it comes.
Thanks, I needed that.
Alright, need a motion to accept the minutes.
So move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Everybody. Item four, the financial statement. About a status copy.
Daniel, you know, on the grocery tax fund, what we set up with the half a cent, um, our auditors have been here and, um, he wanted to know what that was and I told him, of course, and he said that, I don't know if he told you, he said he didn't think we needed that, but that's something that he, he can address with you guys.
He don't decide what we need.
He's there.
I know, we might, we might need to call it something else, but we're not gonna stop that.
When he, when he comes in to go to the hall, it will.
Crazy, man. They're gonna tell us we can't do something.
So many encounters.
We got a lawyer that'll take care of stuff like that.
There you go. I was gonna say, you can tell me.
He's not saying we have to, Don, and he just makes recommendations as.
What was she's recommendation?
He just didn't think that we needed that if we had the tax reserve and, and since we didn't purchase it ourselves. But, I mean, that's all he said and he will go over things with you guys when he gets done.
Hey, if you want to say it.
Yeah, but.
Ben, well, could you not put that in the occupational tax reserve or could you?
That's what it said right there.
No.
No, it's not asked.
Well, it says occupational tax reserve.
That's a different.
That's the grocery tax.
That was the 10,000 a year we.
That's correct. I mean, that, I'm shocked that they didn't say anything about that. That's what we pulled out. He hadn't said anything about that maybe?
Well, I mean, he did, but I don't know what it was because.
They'd been itself saying things, but you don't combine them or, I don't know.
Well, what we were going to utilize it for was supposed to be combined, that was supposed to be combined in with the grocery tax fund and we were gonna look at doing projects for roads. If we didn't get all the money, because we had a percentage of money with 85,000, whatever that amount is now, we had had matching.
You talking about on the occupational fund or?
Yes, we talked about that at one meeting. You remember we made an agreement that we would leave them in there as one fund because it was supposed to be in like, there was an additional $18,000 that I got wrote down on another note that was in there too, that was from the, um, money that was left over from.
Community development.
That's right.
And it was put in the general.
And so that got moved into the general, then the tent stayed here and it was supposed to be moved back because that way we could start utilizing that money as projects for roads.
Oh, I don't think we can co-labor that tax money.
No, they can't.
Because we had talked about if we don't use it, giving it back to them.
Right.
So we need to keep it in a fund somewhere or do away with it one because.
If we can't, if we can't use it at all.
Well, then we might.
Anything that we need to go ahead and put it back in.
You need to find that setup.
What we voted on was to let it grow and see in a couple of years what the grocery store was doing, where we needed any money.
We said we'd done the assessment in October, but anywhere.
We got to pass a little.
What I wanted to look at too is, is keeping that money, let it be enough and if we get a chance to get the plan in here or, or industry in here, we have to pay them anyway, so we need funds to do that.
But you can't use that.
You can't do that. You can't use what's coming out of what's.
I mean, we could, but we can't.
We can't.
Yeah, we could, but we can't use that.
The other one is telling you is we took it to use for the market and we're not that guy. So we have to see it back in that.
We got it, we just lose it for that.
We have to.
I thought we discussed using for other industries we had in hand. We need to amend that somewhat.
Yeah.
Because we want Hackenberg to eventually grow and if we just sit here and go a straight line, we ain't never gonna get nothing and ain't gonna have nothing. And I'm not cheating, but I'm talking about using facilities that we have for, for the towns.
You gotta go in there and look and say that in the, I don't remember when it was, whenever this, and you were gonna go back in and amend that statement in there saying that you're not utilizing that, now we would like to utilize it, but you gotta put in there what you're gonna use it for.
Yeah.
We can't just say that we wanna throw it in there. So get a project in that and say that our goal is to $50,000, whatever it is, and use it for a project.
See, that's true. Tell me that's how about C3 funds, that you, you have money available, right? If you got industry in them, that's what I'd like to see.
Yeah, I mean, we could do that. We just have to go in there and.
Yeah. But.
Will you do that?
Put it in there.
You'll have to, you'll have to put it in the next minute.
That's right.
You'll have to put it in.
Resolution.
But how was the $10,000 that was in the occupational tax reserve? Can we not go ahead and move that back in and do away with that? Because that was for occupational and it was set up to be, but that was also gonna be reserved for the grocery with addition of a half a cent and since we're having to do away with a half a cent eventually with that and occupational needs to go back into the general fund.
And it being able to use it for anything we need throughout, like the general fund, it ought to go back anymore and just stop there.
Y'all agree with that?
And that'll help, Carl, on that situation.
I'm okay with it. We just need to decide, are we talking about keeping half of the, what'd you say, from now on?
Yeah, right now we are. He's gonna do us an amendment to.
Well, we can amend it. Tony wouldn't have to do it, but.
But we can't vote on it because it's not.
It's not.
And we need to, I guess, decide and give everybody time to see if they wanna use half of that tax money for that.
Well, if we're not, if we're not getting as much grant money as we expected to get for roads, then we need to utilize that funding because our roads are, are salaried.
Since it was passed for school before we go into the next meeting, let's get a report from the school, how much they've still got in their account and if they're in doubt or need to have said anything, you know, so you forward, you don't go, I know, well, Principal Harden ain't over there no more, but the last meeting he was in, he said it was in good shape and they weren't spending a whole lot of it, so.
Yeah, we need.
I think we need to get a report from them first and then, I mean, we've done voting though, you know, use it obviously, but.
We need to get a financial statement and see where they're.
I spoke to one of the members a couple of weeks ago. He said that, um, they were trying to save up some money for a project to build that outdoor pavilion that they want to build for the kids who have a break here and everything, so they're not quite there yet. That's their next project that they're wanting to do and so, but we didn't need to find out because you can't, you don't wanna go in here and say that, hey, they've got a, they've got a plan, a place to do this and they need this X amount of money and we don't need to jeopardize that.
We know that 42,000 back in there, is that correct?
They can't use it for that. I think resources.
The school.
Education at the end.
That's right.
National education for 30.
You might know what they're gonna do is use it for science.
Stu费.
That's what we asked me for. We have family and there's some science projects and stuff.
We leave 30 in there.
You like that, that's what they got. And you can do that.
You know, you have to, that's limited amount, but you know, buying it with them, it ain't. It's just so.
Isn't that really filthy? Oh, yeah.
We ain't. I didn't have that on.
Yeah, I don't think. Yeah, I'm staying there. So I have to.
Cool.
Financial statement. Need a motion to accept the financial statement.
Hold on, I got a question on the income statement. Are we seeing a trend of going down on our actual income for the year to date? Do we have to do any kind of budget adjustments or anything? Carl, have you seen any kind of trends? Because the only thing I've noticed is our, uh, transfer occupational is below target right now. We, we have zero showing in there and we have budget.
I haven't transferred any.
Okay.
I need to transfer it.
Your financial statement.
You know, we usually.
Yeah, I know. I'll do a comparison off of this.
Yeah.
And that way I can see if we gotta do any adjustments for.
See, I've got 231,000 in there that can be transferred.
Okay. Well, we have a miscellaneous expense of $2,500 in the police department for a month.
$100.
Oh, we got to get crazy. Well, that's what you gotta look at. Either they want to find out anymore, here for you or your policy, so that's good.
Yep. And we have to do a lot of maintenance, western equipment.
Mm-hmm.
Hopefully we'll have a better year. Motion to accept the financial statement. Eugene made a motion, second.
Second.
All in favor? Alright, item five, panel of deals.
What's these clock feature repairs?
Um, one of them, biggest one, most of the lights at the senior building, the ballast took that bad, so according to them, they were better off to replace the entire light with LEDs and so that's what happened.
Okay.
And others are repairs on.
Heating system or?
They didn't give all the heating system, if that's for the gym repaired, only one of them's working in there.
Chad said he got them all working.
The other day they wouldn't need one of them working.
Yeah, he went over there and said he got them all.
Somebody turned all the breakers off.
Yeah, they don't need to do that. These are all thermostat.
Yeah. And then they had a, the other part, they had problems with their heat too in the other part of the building. And I don't know if somebody turned their breakers off too, but somebody got in the main control cabinet and turned everything off.
Think we need to put a padlock on the door, the one upstairs, where people can't be going up there.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's, uh, it's bad to put a lock on the panel because you've got, y'all let the cheerleaders and stuff go up there and practice and that's what that's for unless you're gonna do the sign out or something. But the, there's cameras up there that can go back and look, say, if you need things.
There's one list of checks that already has been written and then there's one that has not, somebody's said they haven't put in the last couple of days. The list of those have, that have been written in codes off title.
What's the harm in figuring out the same amount hours every week? Right now it's having to cover the dock on.
Yeah, but what's he getting 32, 30? I don't know with the check, same with this one.
Uh, some, some weeks it's.
Shouldn't be there. Well, it may just be in two.
For the senior, it's around 21.
I figured we just wanted to say.
And then the other, it's, it varies if he opens the door or if he doesn't.
I was gonna say, no, it's not for more. He only gets paid $8 an hour for the senior member.
Yes.
For driving. I don't know, I'm in two. Figured it was his given. Two is the same.
I'm too, it's the same. I have that same hours. Looks like he's been working, working as much overtime.
Yeah, we'll get it on here tonight, try to remedy that.
But it can lean this. I think nobody's fault, nothing you can do about that.
Motion paid bills.
All right, I made a motion, and done it, second. All in favor? Everybody. All right, no business which Wayne went out, but we've talked about all of the computers for both floors.
They came in today.
Oh, they did, okay.
And he was talking to me, um, before we came in the meeting. He wants to do them one at a time and, um, he suggested that we go through and make a list of what we wanted to transfer over and what we didn't need anymore. Which, there's a lot of old, old stuff, but I'll try to keep what we didn't need on there. And Mandy's is probably more in a hurry than mine because of the.
She probably has memory left on her.
Yeah, but she's got all that, when they download meters.
Yeah.
It's just not compatible with the, the gas company and they've got to get hers fixed, the.
Yeah, so start on Mandy.
And he may start on it next Wednesday, he said probably the best day to do it when the office is closed.
All right. All right, new business, discuss that, he's renting, Sammy, we're about to use some of that money for repair.
I have an invoice that.
It's not his rent, it's his.
It's his power.
That's right.
That's what I, I should have.
When we were talking about that, did we not give him credit for any kind of work?
Only the rent. And then we came back in a different meeting and added up all the power bill and we took off, what was it called, two or three hundred dollars off of one because it was corroded. And then we agreed that we would send him the bill for the twenty-three dollars, whatever it was, and it was all passed by this board.
I think it all five, total, I'm not sure.
And then Carla submitted the bill and then when I asked her about if we had that extra money, because I needed to utilize it to pay for some LED lights for the baseball field, which got, we got ten lights out down there. He hadn't paid the bill and we submitted that, what, back in October, Carla?
Um, actually, it was the first year.
Two of them, two of them on the field three, he's got ten lights out there.
They had replaced the lights on field three.
They're using the ones that we got that's supposed to go up on field two.
Is that not what Chad, what we ordered?
No. What we ordered was for field two last year.
No, I'm talking.
Okay.
That wasn't dollars.
I don't know what field it was from.
It's probably, there's ten total lights that he needed, if he's already ordered them. But he was wanting to utilize the seven ones that we had in the, the shop out there. That's supposed to go on field two because we couldn't get them up last year because of all the rain. So we still got seven lights put up there and there's ten additions that is what I was told by Jonathan and Doug's mom.
I know, they, they ordered, he ordered ten, uh, said they were putting them up in, in field three.
Well, it's fine, but we still gotta figure out why I know he's not paying the bill. What was his excuse, Carla, do you know?
It was that he had spent so much money repairing that place and getting it ready to open.
And they agreed to do that, you know. He probably built it on the first contract, didn't he?
So what's the next steps, Mary? Has he been giving another notice of paying his bill? Because when we had this coming up the last time, he was told that he had to pay this and he had to make sure he pays his, should be about five hundred fifty dollars a month, Carla.
Five hundred.
Five hundred, whatever it is.
And he's paying, but, but he didn't, I paid twenty-three hundred.
Well, I say to get any company or retail, whatever, to come to town, you gotta have an incentive. I'm, I'm not for going back and pushing that, but.
Even though we voted on it, it doesn't vote? We voted on it to vote, where he, it would be kind of worse though. Y'all voted to pass any kind of work for the rent. Then we came back and went voting and itemized, it was in his contract, that we could get it itemized.
That's my opinion.
Itemize, itemize, and it was voted and you asked me on here, because people meant to show it. Nobody denied it.
You asked my opinion.
But then you're coming back for what we were voting on. Because nobody's followed through to make sure he paid his part.
That's my opinion that in order to get anybody here and keep people.
And why did he not pay his bill? He was given a bill and if you were given a bill and you didn't pay, what do you think the next actions would be?
He, I, I don't know the way we figured that power bill is perfectly legit, the way we done it.
It was in the contract.
I'm just saying, I was hoping.
Man just stopped fixing the bill, didn't want to say that, but he was having that a bill and he would fix it, that was no problem on his pocket. But that's just how he started out, going, going on here and then he couldn't fill it up, it didn't have the money and then ate the dicks, that's just better involve than none, follow where it.
Uh, I wouldn't say he didn't have the money, but.
No, that's what he told us, I don't know. I mean, I ain't got a clue, but he's got the money when he paid the bill and we go home, he's got everything he's running over.
And more.
What's going, what's going in your objection, off the radio station?
Yeah.
What's going in there, I'm in the box trailer morning.
Now, I think we need to follow through, we agreed that he would pay the bill, so we, Carla submitted the bill and he refused to pay it. So what's the next step if somebody refused to pay the bill?
Circle sign of that day.
And then if he refuses that time, then his next action is to eviction, if you follow contract rules. The contract rule says if he, but if he goes against anything of that.
What contract rule?
That is in the contract.
I don't believe anything I want to do.
I dare, we agreed on that contract and he didn't tell.
I'm just saying.
And now that we're trying to self-convince, he's not following his contract. I was gonna say, you pay it.
If we, if we, the radio station is worth more than.
So you say anybody can come in here and throw a bill?
No, I'm not saying that.
All I'm gonna do is pay his bill.
Just send it back to you.
You don't think you and Tony need to sit down with him and talk to him? He needs to pay because the council wrote it on.
Well, I tell you, we, we expanded the whole year's rent, plus the beginning, and he said, and I could understand if you, I, he know a lot of work, but we wrote that off, he said in the beginning, you know, he would, he would back that up.
We also paid for the repairs of the air conditioner.
Yeah, that was all the stuff we got, need to repair, we paid for every part.
And the original contract said, what are you doing?
Well, actually, it said we would replace the unit and we had done that.
How much is the bill?
Twenty-three hundred.
About a twelve, well, about two hundred and ten a month, if you want to do it famous, but.
Yeah, if y'all want to do it that way, that'd be fine.
I think the radio station has done good, um, it's got a lot of folks listening in the mornings.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying they're not doing good, I'm just saying he needs to pay his bill.
And I paid him three hundred seventy-five dollars for that.
But yours aren't there.
I mean, anybody know different, if anybody else throws you money, you gotta collect it, you can't do that.
My opinion is if we made an agreement, it should be upheld.
That's right.
And then if there's not going to be taking necessary actions to get it upheld.
I mean, that's what we done, ditched a building and all that.
I don't care who it is, if you do it, that's what you need to stick to your guns and do it. That's what it is.
We would have washed it out, you know, we probably should have voted on that before we passed it. Which we washed a lot of it out and we're going to just clean the power bill. And he agreed to, when we talked about it, agreed to the estimate that differs then because that was explained to him and all that was well and good at the time. But, anyway.
Carla, just send it back to you.
Yep.
All right, item number two, set date to open the rec server.
Based on what your conversation was earlier about the use of the baseball or whoever, how are you gonna do, utilize that?
The days we are open to the public, they're not gonna be able to use it, that's not a fair thing we can do.
So same schedules last time, Mondays, Tuesdays and Thurs, uh, Thursdays, is what the schedule was?
Was it Barnett boy, he still working for us or was it?
Um, I think so. He's having the baseball thing, but we'll get with him.
I think he's.
I mean, he always gonna start with him.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying, if he, that's been enough.
Can't go back.
No one's done a thing for.
Eli.
Eli, we'll open it up if he don't want it to hurt somebody.
Also, uh, the school brought in several basketball, um, racks that they donated and so they're in the office in there, so, um, that was good that they done it and then we've got to do a little cleanup, we need to put the goals upstairs, those spare goals and I'll get some people there to do that.
All right, what date y'all have in mind to open up?
That's gonna be based on when you talk to them to determine when they could start to work.
I said just as soon as.
Yeah, any day. Uh, March thirtieth, Thursday and Monday. I'm gonna try to read that, if we can't, we'll push it back a little. I don't think we need to get a motion on that, because it's still gonna be informative.
Up there.
Yeah. All right, item number three, discuss North Street.
Code.
Moving, uh, yeah.
Code.
Moving to North Street, you hit that, I just said that. That, that's the street that runs behind the pharmacy. I've always assumed it's a city street all the way to the end of it. Well, now, the owners have it up for sale and they say their landline crosses that road and the last five hundred feet maybe is not a city road.
You're talking about with Kenny Smith, you're saying that?
Dave Smith.
Really?
Yeah. That's what they're saying.
One of the town voters in, well, they said.
That's a deep question, uh, town expended resources on it.
Exactly.
And, uh.
I think it became a city right away at that point.
Well, having certain argument there.
Well, I think he did.
They accepted the, uh, payment and, um, the labor that went into it, I think it did.
And what it will done if they did, and you cross the ethic same.
Taxed all of the money going into paving that and doing the upkeep.
We're going, still was in eighty-two.
Right, and the, and the landline could check, go across without taking in the road.
But you'd still have a right of way, but what they said was the town never.
Never set it aside, though.
So the town never issued an, don't think?
No, you don't think there, you don't think there was easement in the world, I don't think so.
There was some law, I mean, there was some law that you cannot obtain easement by adverse possession.
That's right.
And that's the law.
But you know what I'm saying, like, whatever law that, ran age of my property, I had my dad alone, a couple of them, some of them were put through a tender. The three that only dropped the owner's sign, he signed off the right over that can go across his property and that being said, as long as it's a middle carrier used, my understanding, that's valid until they move out and fix that right, you know, and if that's the case on that, it would not be the same. If you went back, you might have tracked back to.
Well, originally before the tornado, on that road, it was Kenny Smith and there was two other houses, which was, um, guys that had walked off town.
So that's.
So, yeah.
That house is still there.
Yeah.
But they don't fall into this, you just don't run it again.
There were trailers being put up and I remember when Dave was being curious about that and, uh, he wanted to buy that property.
To ensure nobody could come in and.
Right, right.
Stack any property against him. But.
Well, I guess, I mean, they just look at the label, ask that too, and we got it all right, we got it all right, that's all I.
So what, what are they looking for, they just?
What?
Go back.
What, what brought it all up, they had a buyer interested in it that put a gate up.
Okay.
So, then that got them wondering, well, I don't know if you can or not, and they had a title search done and their land does lay on both sides of the road.
Well, they, they isn't an easement, uh, they have done a good title search on it, uh, and they said there was a one.
There was a similar case about this that happened in Hodges Alba, with the sequestering and all that. Where the owners thought that the road was an easement too and it was not and ended up being in, it was in their pocket too. Yeah, I think you're familiar with the case I'm talking about and they put a gate up across there, there's nothing you can do about it. But that just happened a year and a half ago.
All right. And I'm, I'm not really worried if we keep the water or not.
Yeah.
It more concerns me why we kept it up all this time if we didn't own it.
That's true.
And paving, plum down to the last house.
Twice, it's been took seven one time and then we repaved it over the tornado.
Well, I guess that means that before we start issuing, from here forth, which we didn't know that, they would know us, is that before we agree on paving, we might want to do a search and make sure that it's within our end and that we own it. Of course, in the domain, we don't fall into this situation. That's our practice.
And I think it's wise y'all not to give away those anyways.
That's right.
Because it's hard to condemn them once they can release back to the owner.
Right.
I just, uh.
So from this day forward, we really don't need to do any kind of maintaining in that area.
They would be turning it in, they would redecide, well, that's.
We need to find out exactly, no, they didn't want to give part of it to the town because Miss Bigington would be landlocked according to their property if they didn't give us, what was it, probably two hundred feet of that room that's on their property.
So it was originally was part of drive and somehow through the years, it's a curd. The other, the house that was on there now would have to request an easement from the homeowner to be able to access that driveway to be able to get the rights. And that may have been some kind of verbal easement, I don't know.
Well, there's no way we could have shut, they could have shut her off.
And that was really, without taking it, you've been asked the.
I don't think you could have a verbal easement to you to adapt it, right?
Yeah, is that, can you research that? See if that's on either documents.
Oh.
I don't know what we can do.
They, they can't landlock anybody else, but they're not, so.
Right, but now that's, they're laying like they're saying and they give us the two hundred feet down below property. I don't see, well, we got anything to say about it, do you?
No.
Is it the very end of north?
And get them a sign.
You have to do.
Yeah, they, they really end them officially, yeah, they have to, they need to get it blown aside, because that's all we would have, make them learn feet, we don't need it, because then they're gonna keep it up.
No, we, we can buy it down to their landline, I think.
I do too.
If somebody can get it down there.
Yeah, we don't want to have it on somebody else's land, it not being a city street.
Yeah, we, we need to go as far as.
Well, you're saying.
I don't think it's a city street.
Well, it is. You know, there's houses there in the east.
It's really.
It is. It's really a city street with them other houses and it's.
I think it's a little bit saying, is that, that's probably a little bit. I'll bet that, I'll bet that, that's a lot of money, keep that, get more of it.
What, what we need to mainly do is do we accept that two hundred, about two hundred feet, and I, I think we do. And then it will end at their property line.
Thank you, as I would, but are they asking us to do some kind of legal fees to document that or do we? or do this?
They already...
Or what are they doing? Because it's kinda been dated, I mean, it's...
Yeah, they're, they're...
So there's some big fees on that.
Dated.
So who's paying for that?
I wouldn't say they've already done that, they're just waiting to see if we take it or not.
We need to make sure that it's, let's see if that's in the contract.
That's really hard.
Because you have to say that verbally, I mean, verbally, it is that it don't show it right, so we don't know, 'cause we're run off a hearsay, so we need to see it.
Well, the main thing I need to know is if y'all are in favor of accepting it, if they deed it back to the town. That, or to get past, uh, Ms. Wiggington.
If there's no place that says it's a city street, we ain't got no choice.
That's right.
So everybody's good, we've taken that?
Yeah, if there's a deed on it.
Uh, we do probably need to get that in a motion form. Motion to, uh, recommend...
Exactly.
The frontage, the road frontage from...
From Katie Smith.
That they're deeding back to the town.
Providing there's not a deed, uh, right of way, what you call it?
Easement on it.
Easement on it.
Yeah, they're, they're deeding it.
But, but we don't, we don't wanna make sure that there's...
Because you're gonna, once you take that road, then you get into the point where if it's gonna be a side street, it how many, I don't remember what the footage is, and then you got easements off of that too. For water lines, anything else, you got all that rights. So it's center line of the road, sixty feet on those, I don't remember if it's sixty feet or something.
Even with their water down there, the water department's always gonna have a right away down to that property.
Well, they do, but I'm talking about, of course, this maintaining. Because some people get upset when you say, hey, we actually own because we've got the rights now of that center line of that road. And people put fences right up to the road and everything else, and they forget that center line off of that is easement of that road. You know, so...
I don't think that's an issue here, but yeah, I mean, I know what you're saying. So we'll get back with Katie and then if they're deeding it over, we, we agree, we'll take it.
Yeah.
So Don made a motion, I guess, on that?
Yeah, but I wanna make sure there's not no deed on that, no right of way for the town.
Well, I believe that.
If there's not, I make a motion if there's not, did we accept that law?
I had a notice that was done, a title search on it. And I went back and looked myself and I could find, she, she does a good job on those, that's kind of what she does.
Yeah. Alright, so Don made a motion, and we get a second. Ken, second. All in favor?
Yeah.
Everybody. Alright, item number four, we had discussed a rollback about updating the park. And y'all should have in your packet. The main playground part will be the, uh, what they call the two-step, be that one right there.
Make everybody coffee's a box.
Which one? This one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, and just forget about what's on the back of it, I gave you another pen out when we came in.
Thinking about this?
Yes.
Okay, so one, one area is that, I have a question.
Just about it?
Yeah.
Why, why do we need a picnic table in that area?
Because a lot of families don't have anywhere to sit, I mean, you got the...
Can you not change it, maybe put the benches instead of having a picnic table? Because you've got the two pavions down there, if you're gonna put that in that area.
There's really not any seating area in that, so I thought...
Well, it says a six-inch bench was back down and...
Yeah, but I'd like to put two in around the walking track, 'cause there's nowhere for people to sit and take a break.
Mm-hmm.
So, I was thinking about putting two of the benches, that's playing around with the two picnic tables, and they're, they're not huge tables, I mean, you know, they're, they're gonna fit into the concept of the park. And then two of the benches around the track.
You're gonna build a pad to put them on?
Yeah.
Okay.
You get a product, tell us what each product is, description, gives the price of each one. Do they install that? They will, but right now we have it where we're installing it. Which saves about five to six thousand dollars. Well, Chad will move it down. Uh, Chad will look at it, he said they were.
The, uh, twelve-inch playground border with spikes, you know, that's the perimeter of round this, is there a need for that?
Uh, just...
Because that's two thousand dollars.
Keep that engineered wood inside it.
Okay, so they're gonna come in with something, level that back off for the building, is that?
Yeah.
Like this?
Right.
Okay, okay.
And then we'll put the engineered wood in and that border it drops it all. From watching the light. Me and Don's been talking with RCMD, I sent them the information and working on a grant too to have that on this.
We asked them for twelve thousand, we hoping they would at least ten.
Spoke with, uh, Senator Gildre and Tracy Bowden, they're, they're backing it, they're behind it.
I mean, we need it, definitely need it. Because people are now going out of town to different playgrounds, um...
Little loose one there.
If we put this nice structure in, you plan on trying to have this built by the springtime?
So as they can get it here and we can get it out.
Okay.
We're gonna put that stuff around it, aren't we?
Well, yeah, you're gonna have to, but you need to take, you know, if we go in and take that wood surface out, it ain't worth the hell it is, and if come in and redo it all, it'd be nice.
And some of that older equipment, I'd like to move to Wiggington, down to their walking track.
Mm-hmm.
I would like that. Yes, that we can, some of it need, I mean, we could keep, but...
You notice this doesn't have swings on it, so you wanna keep your swings?
Well, I've got swings over here.
Um, one need to go with this one, so that, that one's cheaper, isn't it?
Well, just, uh, everybody looked at it and they, they recommended that they liked that one better. It's not really a whole, whole lot different, it's got a capacity of thirty, this one's got twenty-five, and six thousand dollars cheaper too. Which is not mine, you got the money to do it.
Well, what I see the major difference is, is this one's got a wheelchair area.
Right.
Because that one does not.
That's one.
That's one.
Right, that, that was a big part in what we were looking at too.
I don't know how they're gonna push that wheelchair and that engineered wood, but...
Well, I've talked with them about that, and it's as long as you have a good surface underneath it, which we should, that you can maneuver them and...
Have you talked to them about, instead of using the engineer individual, instead of, it is higher, but it's nice. You won't have to worry about it.
By far.
Mm-hmm. Get additional grant money, ask for that, that'd be awesome. There's no limits on the budget, we're not...
When you know, uh, crystal over a contour, they would be willing to help clean the park up and whatever needed to be done to help with, um, cleaning and updating or painting or whatever.
I think the biggest thing here would be money.
Uh, all the further down here where it talks about their home to build, well, that basketball goes.
Yeah.
If they had the basketball goes, it needs to be on concrete, and then it'd be nice if you go ahead and have somebody draw this out and have it laid out, 'cause, and be utilized the resources, and that way it's functional. Because if you just throw something way over here and just throw it over here, they're gonna look nice.
Yeah, we know where you're going. Yeah, we, we can get somebody to draw it out before we put it out.
So what you need to do, but I know it, you already got the budget to buy this.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure everybody agreed on what we have here.
Right. This is similar to what the school put in to us on this, if you haven't been over and looked at their, it's similar to this one right here. And then they've got some other pieces too that they've got, the swings and everything else.
We get some more money, hopefully we can add more pieces to it as we get. And we might even get people to sponsor the matches.
Mm-hmm.
Put their names on it. So if y'all are, y'all okay with the step two and the, uh, quote that I gave everybody here, then I'll get it ordered tomorrow.
Twenty-four, two fifty-six, is that it?
Yeah.
What was it, twenty-four?
Two fifty-six.
Yeah.
That's, well, actually twenty-one, seven forty-four, and shipping them in twenty-four eighty-two, and it comes up to twenty-four, two fifty-six.
Where's this coming out up there?
Texas.
Chad might need a road trip.
He couldn't go get it, go ahead, chief.
No.
Alright, everybody's alright with it, I'll get the order tomorrow.
Is that the word down here?
Yes.
Which one is it, twenty fifteen ten?
It's based on what equipment it is, if you read it, it varies.
It's probably, I'm sure it's plastic, so probably fifty, fifty twenty, yeah.
No, the swing sets is five years, you just gotta read it, it's gonna be this, yeah. And so the lifetime warranty, or super max, or max.
Alright.
It's a hardware.
And that's everything you're gonna need to put it together, besides the savings.
Besides doing the prep work and getting it ready. Alright, need a motion to accept the bid on the park equipment?
Motion.
Abby? Second? Yep. Eugene? All of you. Everybody. Alright, item number five, we have the chief's conference lodging in April for Jonathan Newtons.
We've got, we've got a few things in your packet, uh, Jonathan wants to attend, uh, Anniston, uh, four seven to four eleven.
Motion to send him to his conference, with the exception of not coming back if he's quarantined.
How many hours can we get out of that? So, twenty-four? Twenty-four.
It's part of his training, eh?
Yes. And that's required.
Required.
Now, if it gets to the point where they do start some of that, be, I would look at not going. So they may, they may get to that. Protect yourself and your family.
But that'll still be up to A post.
That's right.
They're the deciding factor.
Yeah.
Because the, the chief's stuff is harder to get than, than regular officers.
Alright, made a motion to send Jonathan to the chief's conference.
I already did, I already did this.
Don done that?
Yeah.
Third second?
I'll be.
Okay. All in favor? Everybody? Okay.
How, how much was it sold at?
Two hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
That's just lodging. Alright, item six, discussed purchase of new body cams, straw officers, chief Oop says three options.
I probably referred this last, about months ago when Jeremy came in about buying vests and new body cams and stuff.
I don't think body cams is part of it.
Was that not in that? I did, I thought it was part of it. Because we, we talked, I thought we talked about they needed some of these.
They, he bought everything for a, uh...
I'm not saying they didn't, didn't buy them, you know, I thought we had already agreed to buy new body cams for them.
Yes, for an active shooter.
Active shooter kit.
Okay.
Um, yeah, there were three different quotes in your packet.
Do I have a currently ready to do them?
We have a couple that are still operating, but they're, they're about on their last leg.
Are all of our officers using them like they need to be?
Yes, yes, we gotta use them.
Did you check with the, they was offering some kind of program, uh, for the Alabama to hip with the purchase of these for officers, have they issued any of that this year?
You get some cop grants every now and then, but, um, sometimes they're covering, sometimes they don't.
Because there's certain grants that you can, that we can get to hip out with some of this equipment. There's a big push for making sure police officers are getting things they need.
You checked how many grants Jonathan, that might be available?
I'm looking in some. Let's see what we can get.
What we have right now is it, is it work in use, I mean, is it gonna work right now?
Will it work right now?
Body cams.
For ones we have now?
Yeah.
This, let me show you what we got right there. This is what we got. These things are not working. I just had one got blown up because it got wet. We only have two, maybe three of these that are actually working. And the ones that I was looking at is cheaper than the name of the ones that the most departments are, Elton, that are waterproof. And they also have an LCD screen on the back that you can play back in court if need be, probably downloadable on a computer, which I think they have a picture of it, I don't know if I left a picture of it.
I've got it right here, Tom, if you wanna look. If you wanna look, see what we've got.
This. You got the body cam, a cop tracks, and then right here's the LCD.
This one was a higher priced one, this one here is the, not the one I would choose because it's oversized, it weighs more, it costs more, but it's also waterproof as the others. But the other one is cheaper and it's smaller, it's lightweight, and it has the LCD screen on it.
Which one do you recommend, this one or that one?
The, uh, you know, you know, I think this is the one that, I think also has a infrared night vision that's, uh, capturable up to ten meters.
This one's got the infrared on it. This one right here's got all our own.
It's not that one, but it's got a twin, it's the other one.
This one's got infrared on it also.
The, uh...
So...
This one, this one, yeah.
The price sheet you give us, which one of these cameras was, you gave us, I don't even wanna know what it is. I thought I had something here down the corner, I'm sure it is, something along that. Is that the one you was recommending, the stalker?
No, that's, that's the...
I'm there, it's something from that. Is that the one you was recommending, the Stalker?
No, that's, that's the higher priced one. This is the body cam, the one we got right there.
This is the one.
Yeah, there's some price on this one, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, yeah, it's on the front.
These are, these are waterproof also, just like the other ones. And they're just as good quality as the Axon, but they cost less. The Axon is three thousand, no, that's, that's the cop tracks.
Yes, thirty-one sixty-two, those are twenty-two forty.
And the Axon is, here's another one here, there, three thousand six hundred fifty-five.
Well, they have enough in the police fund to pay for these, do they not?
Okay. So have you researched any from our surrounding officers to see what they're using here on your models?
They're using Axon in Hamilton, the bigger cameras. These, the one that I just showed you, it's a smaller, lighter weight television. It's not as bulky.
Yeah.
And it's, the Axon is heavier. This one is lighter and it's still waterproof. And I think they work better than Axon because they're smaller, lighter weight, because anything we get, it adds weight, everything we have.
Right. I don't know about that.
But you know, why I'm even asking you that is, a lot of the officers already know what's good and what's bad.
Yeah.
If they're down, so I'm, I'm for it, just, I think which one is best.
And this price is for five, correct?
Just because something is cheaper does not make.
Right, it doesn't always mean that.
So, make sure that we.
I actually rented these in Montgomery when I was down there, if they exist, I had them, and I looked at the Axons. They're both good quality cameras.
Or is anybody using them, that's the question, the ones you're talking about buying?
Some of the department, not locally, not here.
Yeah, but I mean.
But there are a lot of departments elsewhere that use them. Before we purchased these, we could have the guy come down here and do a demonstration of anything you need, and he can explain all that to anybody that needs them.
Did he demonstrate it to you?
Yes, he did.
Well, again, you're using them, you've been using them, yes. I'm not saying if you're better down here, but let's say if there's a hundred departments using them, they've got good service out there, and that's what you want. My motive's gonna be what, by what you suggest, because you're using them.
I would like them to be as lightweight as these, but these here are just, they're not waterproof, and these are, you know, they're not. These things here, we've done broke about a dozen of these.
And I guess you'll have to share them, like you can get the three, and somebody will lay you just back to normal next man.
Right.
Where was the life of these, did really?
The life of them, it, it's hard to say. I mean, we've had these for quite a few years. If you don't abuse them, they'll like to last five to ten years. Anything can malfunction.
Three hundred and fifty pieces, that's a third of what I'm.
Part of it's gonna be based on its software generated, you gotta plug it into a computer, then download your data. So if they don't support you anymore, they're obsolete. So if those are two to three years old, they're getting to the point where they're obsolete, then we need to make sure we go with the newer technology. And if that is the newest technology on the market, then those are the ones that went in it. Which one do you think?
If you sell them, demonstrate it, and you like them.
They, well, they're well built, I mean, they've got big quality, and they match the quality of the Axon that Hamilton's department is using, they just cost more. And these compared Axon, you weigh, take, take the price out of the picture, the body cam, to me, would be a better choice because it's about the same quads Axon, lighter weight, and it's got the same features. And matter of fact, I think it has one or two extra features, the Axon bezel cam. While you're actually video recording, you can take a still picture at the same time if need be, things like that.
But if you sell them in operation and you like them, I'm good with it.
They demonstrated it at the exhibit in Montgomery, while I was down. Of course, I had, they have a lot of different stuff down there too.
So how many you proposing, when do you need to purchase?
Total of five.
Five, okay.
I'm making a motion by five body cams, thousand twenty-three forty. Is that what you want? The body cam.
Done made a motion, second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Everybody.
Have you seen them at the, at a chief's conference?
No, exhibit, at exhibit.
That's what it went down to.
I wonder if they, you might, they might have some of that stuff at this next thing you're gonna want to take.
No, not in Anniston.
Oh, it is.
Well, they only do that in Montgomery at the chief's conference, when they did, they have the big exhibit down there.
Yeah, so you gotta look at all the new stuff.
Correct.
That's good stuff out there.
That's all the new, new, new things they come out with, and they have it at the exhibit in Montgomery at the Renaissance exhibit center.
Okay.
They have all the cars, the new lights, and all that kinda good stuff.
Yeah, do it.
Yeah, if you're good with that, we're good with it. Appreciate it, James. Alright, item number seven, discussing neighbor day and car show. In talking with Goto Ray, most people that enter the car shows nailed, they are not really into getting a trophy. He recommends, he, he's gonna put a thousand dollars of his own money up, and he recommends that we put a thousand in, and that he gives cash prizes to the winner, so. He said he'd get a better draw, and that's what everybody's going to.
Costs that much for trophies anyway, trophies discollected us. I feel the same way that he does about that. Ain't no sense buying trophies, and they just set them down, let us collect them.
Carl, we'll go ahead and make a motion on that, and then we'll discuss neighbor day, anything you have on it, so.
Motion to give a cash instead of trophies.
Thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Don made a motion, second.
Second.
Tabby. All in favor? Everybody. You can update us on where we're at, or we'll get that done.
Hey, I'm working on trying to get some vendors, of course, it's just been crazy with the audit and everything. Haven't had a lot of time. But I've got several people that are trying to help me, you know, get some folks, and I've got the ice cream vendor's gonna get to come this time, which will be very good.
Brad coming back, you already got him secured.
Who?
Yes.
Bouncy?
Yes, Brad, Brad is coming, and he's gonna even have, I think, funnel cakes at that point we decided, and some of those.
I'm not telling them that.
We, Daryl and I have talked about, you know, the school, we usually have the kids draw something. Their participation has been down in the last two years, and so we decided that just do something simple. And Manny and I was discussing, and why don't we just do like a outline of the state of Alabama and put a star or a panther head where Hackleburg is, and maybe put Hackleburg diagonally and put neighbor day twenty-twenty on it, and just have it that simple. And I've called the lady who usually does the shirts, and they're trying to get us a, a drawing and something set up for us. And we've discussed some colors, maybe using something brighter instead of going with gold and stuff, because used to, we used, we had bright colored shirts for neighbor day.
Do you think, was that new principal over there, that he might could get some more participation?
With Zellman Henry.
Oh, okay.
And we tried last year, give them ice cream and for their home class, and it just didn't work well. So what we, they laughed at my drawing, but, but what, Daryl's laughing now. But I think it'll be cute. We'll get it and look at it and see if everybody likes it. Something that will, that will stay on, it'll be simple.
You wanna all bust a draw on it?
Yeah, y'all gonna submit it.
Yeah. We all draw something.
Y'all come up with something.
Don, you.
We're gonna get something, Kim.
I could go ahead, totally. But if y'all didn't win, like Daryl doing her, I'm not gonna do it no more. I don't know why.
I was laughing at her, I was laughing at her.
I know.
No, it was a good, it was a good drawing.
But, but we're trying to get, it's hard to get vendors these days, and I'm working at that, but I need, you know.
No porch hands this year?
Well, I'm trying to get him too, and it's hard to get those folks, but we've got other people having, you know, their festivals the same time, and it's, it's difficult. But maybe we can get enough here and have some pretty weather and have some good music. Now, I've got music, people lining up for that. Joseph Baldwin, and I think Richard Kitchens, and that band's coming back, and the Busby Guy, he's really good, Josie Beth Jones from Hamilton. And there is a, a group from Hamilton, I don't know their name, they do gospel, what am I trying to say? Bluegrass gospel. And they're interested, so I've gotta get with them over time. But I've got several people lined up, you know.
Did you get Cross and Dixie?
Well, Josie Beth is, was with them, and I don't know if they wanna offer form or or. And the Nix Brothers, Kobe and Connor, wanna do, and Creek, and.
Have you got Kobe and Connor yet? And Don will go on at six o'clock. Okay, I didn't know.
But I need to get, you know, we need to get door prizes, and we need to get donations for entertainment and stuff like we normally do. But if you guys will work on getting us some donations and door prizes.
Can't do it tomorrow.
Yes, you can. So, y'all talk good enough, y'all can get, get some folks on, donate some stuff.
Hit Tony Glenn, I'll go.
Maybe in the radio station, I don't know.
Yeah, we need to hit everybody.
We might run off the other time.
So, you know, Ron has that day, that's a big.
Yeah, I get that job.
But it's coming along, it's just.
What about vendors, what are we at on that?
We don't have a whole lot right now, but I'm working on, the flea markets are coming up, Chippewa and most shows, and I thought about hitting them and trying to get a card around and, and see if we can get some of those folks. And I've tried the, the guys that Don wants, we'll see what we can. We do have barbecue vendor.
Well, I got a work spot, Don, we'll get along, back to home, get everybody to come if you don't have to.
Backwood's wanting to, but she has got to get back with me, and Rattlesnake is having their big deal with Thanksgiving now, she's hooked with them, so she had to.
Are we doing a five K run this year?
The cheerleaders wanna do a color run.
Color run, okay.
Hope and, well, Brittany George is gonna be the sponsor. She's already got with me and begging to, to do that. I hope that can, can happen, last time they planned it, it ran.
Either that or mud run, mud runs are big right now.
And I haven't talked to anybody about the lawnmower pool, we need to try.
Yeah, we're doing, maybe too late, David.
If anybody would pitch in, we could get, could make it good, we just, we don't have the, you know, everybody working hard to get it to that day.
Alright, anybody's out and about, would you think about it?
If we could get the Sylitane involved, remember one year they set up the different displays with the quilts and they, and the birdhouse, and they had some.
Made the birdhouse and things like that.
They talked to Sylitane, because Miss Amy was always real good about getting that notion.
I can ask them, but there's just, it would have to use the gym and set it up, that's where they set them up.
Because that way you get more people involved.
The kids are not, you know, they don't have shop, they don't, they're not making them.
We didn't have shop, but, you know, that actually is a project.
Back then they did.
Yeah.
So, if we could get some of that, that would help too, it'd bring people out.
Maybe next year, if you got a home at the park back.
Yes.
You said Joseph's.
Joseph's business.
Congratulations.
He's gonna have time, man, he'll wanna fix it up, yeah.
He'll take off a monkey.
I don't think it'll be at all, it's still there, is it?
Seven days after the November election.
Alright, so you got the motion about the money in the car show.
Mm-hmm.
Item number eight, everybody's familiar, the attorney fees we incurred on doing our deal with People's Trust. Me and Don and Trey met with some of the folks at People's Trust, and, you know, they, they know how important that was, and they felt like they needed, they wanted to help us, and they knew we did need it, and we're grateful for it. But, you know, in their words, you know, having a successful grocery store at Hackleburg is critical to the current and future strength of our town. So, you know, in their support of our economic development, they wanna pay the remaining, remaining twenty-five hundred on the attorney fees, so. I mean, I think that's good of them to.
We made the money.
But.
Well, we paid it out, twenty-five hundred dollar payment. We like. I thought we agreed to pay ten thousand.
We did, we were paying twenty-five, and we owe one more payment, and they're gonna make a file payment, so.
Anyway, basically, what we asked for in the beginning, but they get what it worth that, they owe twenty-five hundred dollars.
Twenty-five hundred, twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, you know, it was from beginning, we, we give them five, then we back four, but that's good.
Well, it, it wasn't them, it was the attorney.
Yeah, yeah.
So, they're not giving up any of.
Banks attorney.
Right, yeah. I mean, they're, they're just gonna pay him that twenty-five hundred, and when we pay our last twenty-five, Carl, if we can get that ready tomorrow, that's, that'll be done.
I had to, when we had it two o'clock instead of toward them, they said, well, we had to buy it on the floor.
And the Fed, yeah. But they, they're a good group, and they, you know, Hackleburg's important too, you know, we use them for our depository, and, you know, it's always good to keep that relationship with them, and we feel like we have a good one. That's good of them to do that, we appreciate them stepping up and taking care of that. Alright, item number nine. I don't guess anybody opposes them doing that, do they?
Yeah. I do, I do. I do, I'm like, man.
Item number nine, hire full-time street department worker.
I thought we already done that meeting or two, was it?
No, we, we said we were gonna wait till springtime got here to make a full-time hire.
Well, we did, Sunday, it didn't work.
It was. It was majority.
It got knocked down.
Majority voted to wait until springtime.
Save eight hundred dollars from wasting money.
There it goes, majority roots.
Yeah.
Anyway, we need to hire a full-time street department worker.
I want a full-time street worker that can run equipment.
Yeah, we.
How's it gonna be hard, like, sister plays teams, but it gonna be a.
We'll, we'll have.
I'll lean into interviews, I know where you gonna hire them or.
We gonna hire, we can, I'll be in on interviews and everybody will have the right to be in and decide who they wanna hire.
We plan on posting it for two weeks, what's your plan?
Yes.
Based on those current job descriptions out there?
Yeah.
Cause I think we had that in the original, we already got the job description, our group, when we first came into office.
What's gonna be the hiring rate? Ten?
It's a little bit higher than that.
A lot of people.
Twelve.
Seventy-five.
Twelve seventy-five.
I thought Chad is at thirteen, said no.
He is now.
Yeah.
So, I'd say, yeah. I would say hire in at twelve. And any job you do, labor intensive is worth at least twelve bucks an hour.
Are you planning on doing a step raise, getting back up to twelve seventy-five or whatever that value is?
Yes.
Just had an announcement. Two weeks running the paper?
Yeah.
Okay.
Going on that, I want, if you would, call Senator Gudder and Gracie Estes and get them to help us with the state to get us a grader. State's gotta make sale, try to keep them three years and then put them up for sale and we can afford to buy one, but we need them to help us to get a grader. We kept thinking that the police might find one, but they ain't gonna never find one.
They're hard to come by.
They're hard to come by.
Thought maybe see what's in that.
And they could help us with the state to, to get us a grader.
They possibly can, they, which, you know, they option them, they don't.
Yeah. But they get them to cities first. You got your choice. You not to put your name in and they go, you go by list and if they don't sell them, they option them out. Then what about what we got at home base and all that, though? They got energy low.
That's for the lease I'm probably talking about, they're hard to come by.
Yeah, we need, we add a man about that, yeah, we do. And we will list all the qualifications in the job posting. Item number ten, discuss hiring another police officer. Cause everybody knows Adam quit, or I guess you know, puts us back down to three, we'd really need to be at four.
Yeah, we pursued that other opportunity, seeing breach or not.
If he would've went to another department, he wouldn't be.
Some wish that would.
If he would've went to anywhere else, they would've had to pay, but. Have you checked on what we talked about on the certificate?
On what?
Prison, the certificate.
The, oh, the certifications. Okay. Wait, we may proceed, I'll be back in there.
Follow up on that.
I will call them back tomorrow in the morning.
We will hire this officer under the same, same guidelines as we hired David Under. Will offer a twenty-five hundred dollar sign-on bonus. Will run the same ad in the paper, Jonathan's still got it, I'm sure Scott and them have it too.
Well, if they breach their contract, well, that's.
We need to make this new and deal contract, don't we? And same.
Yeah, I mean, our own contract.
Was this last week, now you didn't sign a contract?
No, I can't find one anymore.
David did.
Yeah, David did, but Adam never did, I don't guess. Anyway, we will post that, Scott, we'll get with you. I'll stay with my expectations. Item number eleven, Contour, we'd like to purchase basketball goals at the park. Don?
Yeah, and, and she called me about that today and I talked to Finney, y'all voted against it, we boot y'all out of here.
Please put them up.
Yeah.
So, they're gonna come out and put the.
Put them up and.
And put them up. And build a concrete pad?
Nope, that wasn't discussed. But you got to do it.
Not really. It needs to be a concrete pad.
They draw it out and us do the pad and let them come out.
Well, they might down like the concrete. They may as well do the light, you know, they don't know all about. We'll, we'll get with them.
Yeah, they ain't know nothing wrong with that.
They'll be on the bay and the fair.
You know where that old boat was at that we kinda took out, that old gem? Remember that?
They don't.
That right there is a perfect spot. That's where we was gonna put it.
It smell like oil, it won't give us that much.
We need it.
Yeah.
I'll be there Friday.
Okay.
If they come to us, it's fine. I'll try to draw some.
Darryl, I went with them over there to look at the drainage problem we had at the park and we need a grader on that bed and we, and that driveway that they was gonna fix for us down here about three months ago, ain't nobody done it yet and that man drew the grader. But, but the ditching around the field where you could get the water away from there, it needs it.
It was terrible on field one.
Yes.
Terrible.
Well, you leave it up on the road after they cleaned up.
Yeah.
Or had consolidated, they, that ditch kinda got filled in. It's running down the road.
Can you talk to Kelly in the building, huh?
I can try again.
Kelly, oh, you done asked her?
You might, we might.
I mean, even if we had a volume, I mean, we'd pay them, we might, we might go like the ten dollar model for both of them.
If he don't end up, that's called match, y'all said they'll get, he's managed to run their grader up here.
Well, I didn't know what time it was already, if you gotta have it done, if they get what I'm gonna do in the morning.
Yeah, he does.
I mean, they won't build the bridge for one of the pages. Yeah, I mean. We got it done because that water just standing there. Well, if it's washing back on that ridge or somewhere too, that don't lead to.
No, it's gonna wait for me.
Yeah.
It's gonna drive them in, isn't it?
We used to get ditched right there and it's with the, when they built them fences.
That's my opinion, you know. I'll, I'll call Dale tomorrow to see where they're at.
Those are the grass.
A hundred thousand dollars, though. I know, it's on the streets. I think that's what happened to hackleburg.
They cleaned all that off and, cause that fence was through that.
All right, we'll take care of that and we'll get with Crystal tomorrow. Come up with, item number twelve, Southeastern Grassland has been calling, they're wanting to host an event at the rec center and they, June, they said their four corner posts would not be on the floor, they have padding that goes under it and I'm okay with it, we just need to set a price for a for-profit event.
You just have to put the tarp down, that's what we're doing.
Right.
But they're not gonna be down for a week or two, you're gonna take them down.
No, it's the one out of Carbon Hill.
Only selling the gate, now you gonna do a certain thing, a percentage.
Well, they realize there's no place to do concessions standing there now?
Yeah, I tell them they'd have to use a corner, they wanted to do that and they will.
Yeah.
I'm okay with them doing it, people enjoy it, going out to it. As long as they take care of the floor, we might get a deposit from them.
They don't advertise, no?
Sort of told them, they, they said they would.
We don't split the profit.
Told them I'd find out what y'all wanna do.
Well, it needs to be something.
It can't do it, bro, for sure.
Why don't they do it, you know, if they wanna do something like that, I heard today on the radio, QLT was running us a thing for Mr. Brass. Y'all, I don't know if y'all heard it on the radio station, but, not QLT, it was ninety-six point, but they're asking for some additional help, you know, they've been doing some fundraisers for him. Why not do something in conjunction and let the money go to him for his thing? What's in the wheelchair? Mr. Raper's boy that just had an accident.
Oh.
He was on the radio today asking for help on ninety-six point, I got that from the station, I didn't get up there, so.
If we split it, that's where we, we'll split it.
Yeah. And it was, you know, he was needing for additional cost cause he might have additional changing the ramps and all kinds of different things for their house.
So, they gonna split the gate?
He is back.
Yeah, he might, he could give their part.
Well, if they give it all, I think they.
Well, if that's free, it would give them.
And then they, they let all the military and veterans have free, children under five free, any first responders get in free, so they.
That's everybody in Hackleburg, now they don't like that.
We'll get our turn dollars and we can, we can charge them for, hundred fifty bucks or, I mean, whatever y'all wanna do.
Just touch base with them and ask, you know, I don't know what the return.
They make sure I'm gonna make up here and up and along. They don't let rain, they're gonna put four hundred trucks with a round tractor, round with a hand over a sheet.
They had to put the tarp down. And then they had to take them back in, so it's gotta be an agreement. If you do it. But only if it's gonna be, only I'll agree to it if it's gonna be promotional.
Whatever you can get, you just work with what you can get and whatever they get to them.
You know, a lot of people like that, that's something in Hackleburg for them to do, they don't have to leave town.
I took, I took Reed to the last one. She, he about wrestle me down for a month after that. He could beat off his, he got a big head loss and everything.
Hundred dollars done that.
Yeah. Reed will make a whole lot of money, I mean, it's entertainment. So, I'll tell him once he's, we're gonna donate our money and play more try to help meeting that new grant. After they set up a bucket, people just donate ahead of that.
I think they might wanna do that.
Yeah, just a little. All right. Gravel and grade, stay wide, we three eighty-nine, what's the oldest room?
Hey, I got a phone call right before I came in here. There's been a whale that's been discovered on property right down here and it's actually on Gary Coppers, remember where he lived in the curve right there next to Ken's house? And there is an old abandoned whale there and I thought, she asked me if the town could come out and bring out his gravel, he had filled that well, it's dangerous.
Where's that?
It's, uh.
Right there by Burnham Bridge.
Yeah, right there between Burning and us, there's a little whale right there and it's actually pretty big, it's collapsed airplane into, from all the rain, so.
We have several of them around town.
We need to get that, if you can, put that on the list, get that covered up, cause that's dangerous.
Yeah, we'll do that. I mean, I can do it tomorrow, they're giving rain again, but.
So, you made, made a motion to do that?
Well, I would, no, I just wanted to make sure if we could add that.
Cause it's. You make a motion to do both of them?
Yeah, yeah.
I'll second.
Anytime we, we have emergencies like that, we'll have to have a motion to take care of that. Kathy, all right. Need a motion to adjourn?
Motion?
Second.
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/49CountyNewsTV.